Pitch nineteen.
Private, non-commercial.
Section five, sec- section five, one oh eight.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Page nineteen, private, non-commercial dish antennas.
Yeah, that direct TV is.
So that's like direct TV antennas, correct? So section D, it says number allowed.
One.
One, one should be allowed per single-family home, fine, duplex, triplexes, or townhouse units. So if I've got a townhouse with six residents, they can have one dish?
No, per townhouse unit.
Unit.
Per unit.
Not townhouse building.
Per townhouse unit, so each unit within that complex.
So duplex could have two units, two dishes, yeah, triplex is three.
So a triplex is per unit, okay, that's fine.
Correct.
And I think it's problematic for multifamily apartments.
I, I get it, I mean, that's, that's.
It's only three.
So, you wanna do a thing with that?
I think that's, that's problematic, so.
Okay, I, I, I.
That's been there, we should have asked.
But apartment buildings are limited to three.
Could you repeat that?
Apartment buildings are.
Apartment buildings are what?
Limited to three.
They are limited to three.
Mm-hmm.
The whole building.
What, and what did?
Um, I mean, so how do you pick and choose who gets to get the dish?
You set up a collective system.
Right, usually the apartments are through a collected, collective system.
So they will all share, like, a certain amount will share one dish?
And you have to watch the same program at the same time.
I would so love to see us count the number of dishes on the apartment buildings. This is practically unenforceable as written.
Uh, yeah, I don't know about that.
Because everybody who rents an apartment is entitled to their own dish.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
You know.
You know what, it looks like hell when you go down Sixth Avenue, you see all these antennas out there. It's, I, I agree, that it's collective, you can get, I don't know, you can get multiple. You, you, you go to a hotel and they have a dish. They got one or two dishes up there and you have a hundred rooms in there, they got multiple feeds on that, that's easy enough to do. That, that's, that's, I agree with this order.
I was. Yes, counsel?
No.
I, I don't know, I have to ask her.
I, I, I have a question, I mean, not, not a suggestion for.
I don't know about that.
You can't do it.
Eh, the driveway.
Yeah.
You can't do it.
Uh, Nixon's.
Now that.
Do you really wanna go there?
Can we not go?
No, I was gonna, no, I was gonna say something.
If I may, for just a quick second, I think something that I've just thought of, um, attorneys. And, which was just reminded, reminded me, perhaps the language there is the limitations of the three-dish antennas should be modified with or as allowed by federal law. Because there may be, we'd have to look into the limitations, if there are any limitations from FCC.
Well, the reality is, you don't have to say it, because federal law controls anyway, but if you wanted to say it, you could.
Because right now, you're just saying three.
Well, the footnote would be appropriate, given the issue, because you can't unfairly restrict and wind up having to defend a suit in court because we violated federal law.
For that matter, you might as well allow more dishes by special exception or some hearing process.
Nobody needs two dishes, but everybody wants one, and there's your problem. So if it's a single-family home, you need one dish.
Yeah.
If it's a duplex, you need two.
You can do it.
There's no reason for any more than one per household.
Per, or per unit.
No, even, even if you get one, two, because you, you gotta do all of it as opposed to a single, you still can have that two.
You have a dish?
With the same dish, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, but, but we're talking about the multifamily, you know, we, we had.
Well, nobody's complained about it till now, so, and it's existing language, so why not we just leave it?
See, frankly, the dish business is going out of business anyway, we're all going to the internet for television. It's changing, you know, this, this will be obsolete next seven years, we'll wonder why it was ever there.
So Gary, do you feel that we can just leave without putting that qualifier?
Yeah.
I agree.
They don't care what we say anymore.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right. And Jennifer will go into arbitration or negotiation if somebody sues us in federal court, rather than having to defend it.
I'm okay with that, um, with, with the con- you know, it's just very common in, um, multifamily apartment buildings and condominiums for there to be a shared collective system where there would just be one dish, and that's usually to the liking of the, the property owners. I mean, it's just an aesthetic eyesore, so I just don't foresee, we've never had the challenge in the entire existence of this, this is not new language.
Yeah, we've just let them put every, every antenna they want to on the wall, which is, okay.
And that's what people do.
I'm conf- I'm confident we're okay with this.
All right, so let's move on.
And let, and last, before we move on to this.
I'm sorry, Nixon, what was your, what was your thing?
Uh, what is, I'm on, um, sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
What is drop-in childcare considered?
We have spent some.
What page?
What page you on, Bill?
Page seventeen.
Page seventeen?
What is?
It's defined, didn't we do a definition, Nixon?
Yeah, we actually, we actually struck that diagram.
Drop-in childcare, what page, what is it?
Seventeen.
Is that one seven?
Yes, one seven.
One seven.
Section five, one oh six.
Isn't this where, didn't we talk about this, where this is like if you are, um, like at a, uh, gym?
Shopping center.
And you drop in, you, you just, from a high distance, you just drop your child in? No, it's actually sort of like a gym or other limited drop-by services, I believe that's how staff had, had discussed it with me.
A child play area at a shopping mall would be a drop-in.
That would be another, that would be another example, yes.
As long as the parent remains in the shopping mall, they don't have to be right there at the play area.
And this is permitted in every, every zoning district, every, you could do it every place in the city.
Uh. Where that is an ex- a principal use, yes.
Well, we struck, whereas accessory use, but we've struck all the restrictions on where it had to be.
You're at section five dash one oh six?
Correct.
I think we talked about that elsewhere.
It, it's on page ten.
Yeah.
They're called babysitting service for shoppers.
Pitched in.
Right, number four, A four.
And we actually left, left the definition in, we could strike the definition.
And we changed it from office indoor recreation or mixed-use building, for some reason.
Right, we were pulling that out, actually, on.
Yeah, there was a.
The last time we had a conversation, we were gonna strike all of five dash one oh six, because it's in.
Yeah.
Um, five dash one oh five.
It's redundant.
A four, and also.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I think that was our last discussion, but we'd already shipped it off to them, that's right.
The requirement that the. Right, and the, the requirement that the parent must remain on the premises is never enforced and is probably unenforceable.
Yes.
So are we gonna strike it?
Yeah, I think we're striking it.
Yeah. They put that reserve.
That was our last discussion, but you had already had your books.
All right, so we're dropping, uh, section five, one oh six.
And, and finally, for me, when we, on page twenty-five, when we discuss community residential homes of different sizes, we talk about where they can be located. Uh, community residential homes with six or fewer are permitted anyplace, and community residential homes seven to fourteen are in any multifamily residential district. When we talk about recovery residences, we don't, we don't discuss where they may or may not be.
Can we prohibit that? I don't know if we could.
No.
I don't think we could.
We can't.
The problem is, you need these recovery residences, we have an awful lot of.
You can't prohibit, you can't prohibit the zoning, right?
It's very controversial right now, and there's, and I think the issue is under state law, you cannot prohibit it.
Right, right.
I, I, it's been a while since.
It's under federal law, it's considered a violation of the ADA because, um, people that are in these recovery residences have a.
Disability.
Yeah, they have a recognized disability under federal law, so we're, we're very, our hands are kinda tied when it comes to regulation or distance requirements of the, or any of the like.
And a lot of cities are being sued by, eh, based on those right now, I think Fort Myers, and then there was one in West Palm, Palm Beach.
Yeah, this, I think he said it was in West, I think it's Palm Beach County.
Palm Beach County, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in Palm Beach County. I believe it's Jupiter, it's town of Jupiter.
Okay, so we, we leave that then, because we don't wanna get sued for ADA violations.
I don't wanna be the tough case.
We really ca- we very carefully, two attorneys, um, plus your attorney, um, worked diligently to make sure this section matched
Okay.
and didn't violate any statutes.
All right, do we have any, another point from you, Bob, is that it? All right, Ms. Belay, do you have any points on Article Five that have not been addressed?
No.
All right, Mr. Ernst, do you have any points on Article Five that have not been addressed? This is your opportunity.
Yes, sir, um, I, folks, I'm sorry, I know it's late, but, um.
It's all right.
Uh, uh, my, I, I have, um, several issues regarding, uh, we came up with a whole rewrite on, um, tree trimming, um, and I need to get some qualifications from staff regarding what it entails with residents. I understand you wanna crack down on, um, um, areas where, uh, developers, buildings that are existing now are, are ignoring the rules about trimming trees and destroying trees. Back when the mayor was, uh, when Kevin was the mayor, uh, I was involved with when they destroyed a whole acres of, of live oaks, I, I felt, uh, it, it was disgraceful. But, we've, what we've done was, it seems like we've all of a sudden criminalized a residence for going out and trimming a tree in his backyard. I need qualifications on this.
Let me get this.
This is addressed in page two twenty-five, um, of this section, uh, begins with section five twenty-three or two, I believe, where we, we've added all kinds of different new language regarding tree removal.
Yeah.
And we're not stating, uh, somewhere in here, I need to, to be assured that as a resident, when I go out and I trim my tree, I'm not breaking a law, but from what I can see, I'm now breaking a law if I go out and cut a limb on a tree, or if the tree is in the swill area, like I have an oak tree that was covering the sidewalk that people were bumping their heads on, rather than go and call the city about it, you just go and you trim the tree so that somebody can walk under it. I see our public works director here.
We have our tree arbor, we have our arborists here, but just to frame the discussion, this is actually relocated language, this is not new language
in the city of North Miami. Right, I understand that, well, but, but in effect.
All right, one at a time, one at a time, please, I, I wanna get this right.
But in effect, we're, we're looking at, obviously, almost every resident in the city has been breaking the law, and, and now that we've added this language in here, uh, uh, I'm looking, are, are we, uh, hiring ten more law, uh, ten more code enforcement officers to go out and play, uh, uh, tree patrol, tree police? So, so, please, you know, let's, let's try to get to an understanding on this, as to what residents can do and what they can't.
I'll defer to the tree police.
But, 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 but let, let, let. But let me add to that, I mean, this is not, you know, trying to, trying to criminalize anything. It's, because a lot of time, you know, residents try to trim a tree and then, you know, they end up hat-wrecking the tree, and then which would cause the tree to die. So I think we're trying to, because we want to protect the canopy, the tree canopy of the city, and then we still want to help the resident as they do that, you know, to go through that process, so we can, you know, monitor what they do. Because if they end up, you know, trimming the tree and then they hat-wreck the tree, so it's gonna be a violation, then they find they have to mitigate, and then Kent, eh, I mean Kent, which is our, eh, planner, he, he would, he can even further attest to that, because he's been dealing with those issues for a while.
Well, that, that was one of the concerns that I had, that I originally called, about when we, um, were able to have discussions, um, about concerns that we had. So I totally forgot that I marked off this section, because I, I do take issue with E, F, H, and I.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I do have some concerns, and I share some of your same concerns, especially if the tree has nuisances such as
Sex, sex.
insects and so on and so forth, which I personally have almost had near-death experiences with them, where I almost had car accidents because they've crawled into, um, my vents and, um, you know, we were bit, you know, um, so we've had some crazy situations where I've had to personally come here and say, hey, what are we going to do? Because Public Works will put it on the county, the county would put it back on Public Works, and then they would put it, um, on another organization, I can't quite remember the name, but they deal with indigenous trees to our area. So it's been an uphill battle with trying to get our trees properly treated, trimmed, so on and so forth for the last eight or so years. Um, so I definitely wanna hear what you have to say about that.
Okay, so.
Sorry, it's my fault.
So going back to, uh, Commissioner Ernst's, uh, question.
Sure.
Hello, uh, my name is Kent, I'm planner and arborist for the city. Um, so going back to Ernst's, uh, question, uh, you were going back to the section of why we had these tree, uh, regulations in here?
Right, concerning, especially for a homeowner, having to get permits or, or, uh, you know, as, as so much as, I mean, you even stated in the language, if I wanted to trim off a, a dead branch from my backyard that's hanging over a wire or something like that, or I have to run out and get a permit. Do I or don't I, you know, where is, where is, you know?
Where do the residents stand?
Our, our language is stating so that we have to do that. Unless we have some other counter-language somewhere along the line that I didn't see, I'm looking at this ordinance as saying, every time I wanna cut a, a tree branch off my tree in my backyard, I gotta go get a permit.
Where's that at? I don't see that, I see a permit for tree removal, but I don't.
Well, I'm looking at tree, a tree removal.
That's the.
It goes down further, cutting or injuring trees and shrubs is probably prohibited, no person without a written permit from the Community Planning Development Department shall cut, prune, break, incline, injure, or remove or in any way defeat, deface any tree or shrub. It says it right there in section F.
So for clarification, what that points to, so first of all, there's only a permit required for tree removal, not for trimming. However, if you do more than trimming, if what you do is abuse the tree to the point where the tree is either dead or will die imminently, then at that point, you are required to get a tree removal permit and do things the right way, and that's just because of, uh, liability. At that point, if you have abused the tree to where it's now near death, um, now it becomes a public health hazard. Any, um, high wind?
And it means for public property, not private?
Well, we.
This is pro- pro.
In a, in a, this is privado and public.
But where does that state that, somewhere in the ordinance, so that we understand that?
It actually says it in the ci- in the body, we, we don't further say this is related to public property, so.
So, as it relates to private property with tr- with the tree on public property, how do we address that? Yes, which is city trees. Well, a pu- a public tree on private property, like, for example, your swale, like if you want to trim a tree in a swale, the swale trees are city trees, so if you wanted to get them trimmed, you will contact the city to trim those. Um, Parks and Recreation to trim the trees. If it's a tree limb that's going into power lines, an FPNL would work with, um, the Parks and Recreation Department to get that trimmed.
But as I stated, we've done that, I, I can personally attest to, um, the difficulties that I've experienced trying to get our trees, um, trimmed and or treated. And when we suggested, uh, that we would just go out and get our own lawn service to trim the trees per whatever directives were, were laid out for us as far as how they're supposed to be trimmed, we were told that we could not touch the trees, so.
Well, with this being in, in F, it's saying that no person without a written permit can trim or cut a tree on public property without a permit.
Well, we were told we could not get a permit, we could not touch the tree at all because the trees were indigenous to our area. So from there, we were then directed to go to Public Works. Um, when we went to Public Works, we were then told we had to contact the county. When we contacted, contacted the county, the county then forwarded us to, uh, whatever liaison company that you all deal with that deals with indigenous trees. So as you can see, there's, there's just a, a triangle effect of people just bouncing us around from, from folks to folks, and it wasn't, it wasn't until I literally threw a tantrum, that, you know, they came out, they assessed the situation, and they saw that, you know, they, they could in fact trim the tree or cut the tree or treat the tree.
Yeah.
But it took all of that to get that done, so I would like to see something in writing that speaks to, uh, me having to avoid going through this, or residents having to avoid going through this.
Yes, um, if a tree is located within, you know, it's the city right-of-way, then you can pull a permit to remove the tree if it's approved by.
But then that would be at our expense.
Correct.
So, I don't think that's fair if it's the city's tree.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the city be responsible for, say, like, if it's hindering the sidewalk, that they, that they would.
Yes.
Would be responsible for, for trimming that?
Right, the Parks and Recreation Department would take care of, uh, issues such as if a root was, you know, destroying a sidewalk, but let's say if owner wanted.
You'll get a call on Monday, by the way, because I've got roots that are, that are destroying the swale
Yeah, they, they do that.
that you all put in there about twelve years ago, when you redid the street, the roots from the oak trees are coming right up, uh, through the, and almost hindering the newest, that sidewalk was probably put in about twelve years ago.
Yeah.
So I should call the Public Works.
Public Works, Public Works.
So any, anytime we see anything like that, a resident needs to report that, correct?
Yeah, Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Getting back, I just clarify real quick, so we can wrap this up.
So.
If I, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I took over your question, I'm sorry.
Getting back to the residents, anybody that wants to trim a tree in their backyard or their front yard, no permit?
No permit, as long as you follow the NCA three hundred specifications that are posted on our website, just basically tells you general maintenance standards for pruning a tree.
Sure.
So that you're not, you know, pruning the crown in a hat-wrecking sort of way, or in a way that makes an adverse effect to the tree, making it, you know, die.
And if, if I hire a contractor to do it, and a contractor butchers it up, am I liable, or is the contractor liable for screwing up that tree?
You are liable, it's a property.
And I'm liable because I hired a.
Property owner, because the property owner hired the contractor.
And going back to my situation, how is that addressed? How would that be addressed, or how is it addressed, I'm not.
If you were to hire a contractor?
No, 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 with the situation that, um, that I, uh, you have the soil and the, the tree belonging to the city and so on.
That's parks.
Yeah, if, if the tree belongs to the city, it would be Parks and Recreation or Public Works. If, in the case where, I guess, if you were deferred to another entity, it would depend on the right-of-way. Like, for example, if it's a county road and the county had planted the trees there, then the city, in certain instances, would not be responsible for those trees, because they were planted by the county, the county's trees. Also, on the F dot corridor, if you're dealing with a state road, those trees were planted by F dot, and if the city doesn't have a maintenance agreement over those trees, or if they haven't planted them, it wouldn't be the city's responsibility, it would be F dots, because it would be their trees.
So, eh, my question to you is, is there language in this LDR that states that? And if, if not, I believe there should be, because, um, it is a headache trying to get those trees trimmed and treated. Also, I wanted to speak to getting them treated. How do we go about doing that, or maybe developing some language or writing some language in to also, um, get those trees treated? Uh. Where is this not at the resident's expense?
The city has a yearly maintenance where they come out there and they trim, you know, trees in the city by priority. They have like, you know, categories of higher need for pruning, lower need for pruning, so they do an annual pruning.
Well, I'm not on the, the, the trimming part, I, 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 I got the, the gist of what you're saying. I'm, I'm now on the treating part, because as I stated before, I mean, I've shown pictures of spiders that were, um, poisonous. I've shown pictures where, and I have video in my, um, that shows, um, literally like laced, um, webs streaming from the tippy-top of the tree, thousands of them, no exaggeration, streaming from the tippy-top of the tree down to the ground. Um, of spider webs, silkworms, so on and so forth. Could you imagine, you know, the, eh, just the dangers that we put ourselves in just, eh, just going out into our cars? So how would that be addressed, or how is that being addressed? Because I have gotten nowhere with that.
Well, recently, the city just passed a resolution banning pesticides, which would, I guess, get rid of the pests, so pesticides is not, you know.
So how else would you then treat the, the problem, I mean?
I believe the, or the resolution that you're referring to, it doesn't have an outlaw, outright ban on pesticides, but it does require Parks and Recreation to come out, make an assessment of what the infestation is, and to make a, an effort to come up with less toxic alternatives for treating the issues. And again, since it's a maintenance issue, just like the pruning and the trimming, it would be one properly addressed by Parks and Recreation, because they're charged with, um, administering the pesticide program for the city.
So I'll be here tomorrow, um, because it, it really needs to be treated, I mean, coming into the summertime, and they're all over the place.
Also, with our code two with diversity, that can also limit some of the spread of certain pests for certain types of trees. Once you create the diversity, you actually create barriers containing certain types of pests to certain types of trees and not letting it spread.
Okay. So you need to come and see Parks and Recreation, right? Oh, yes, I will be coming to see you guys, so I'll see you either tomorrow or the day after.
All right, I believe Mr. Pashon has a follow-up inquiry.
Just a quick follow-up to Mr. Ernst's question, so in this, on page two twenty-five, section C, that's, language is being modified?
No, that's.
Tree removal permit required, there's no place in that section it says on city land, it says any place within the city.
I think it said exempt unless herein, is that the part you're talking about?
Unless exempted.
So does that speak to what you're saying?
Section C says anywhere within the city without first obtaining a tree permit.
Yes.
And then it says unless, um, the tree is exempt herein, so.
Which is.
And the exemptions would be.
How, how do we know the tree is exempt?
Would be an invasive, uh, tree or a tree that's dying.
Bob, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if you go to page two thirty-three, section A, it says, applications for removing a tree permit. If you wanted to cut down your mango tree or your avocado tree in your backyard, you need a permit, and then you gotta mitigate the, the coverage, uh, because the city has a list of exempt, the trees that are exempt. And then there's a county ordinance that the city also goes to. So if you have an avocado tree in your backyard and it's dying or whatever, and you wanna cut it down, you have to get a permit from the city before you can do it, and then you gotta mitigate the, 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 no, the tree coverage.
If it's dying, if it's dying, it's exempt.
Okay, or you just don't like it because it's a mess?
It's on the non-exempt, an avocado would be on your non-exempt list, right?
So it's a.
Or, or any tree in your, but, so.
So you need a permit to cut your avocado tree or a mango tree down?
I mean, lo- as, as I'm pointing out, there are probably numerous amounts of residents in the city who have no idea what kind of tree they have in their backyard. It could be a Florida holly to a, a, a ligman vitie or whatever, not knowing if it's endangered or if it's not, that are trimming these trees all the time, and, you know, all of a sudden, they may be in violation. So ha- half your residents are, are code violators because of this. So I mean, we're, we're, it, it seems to me, we're, we're codifying things that are, are making unnecessary burdens on, on your, on your, on your infrastructure for, for compliance.
Well, it goes to the extreme, if you require these permits and you require the site survey and you require the tree mitigation, how many thousands of dollars are you going to spend in compliance before you ever get to the tree? You see, we've made this so expensive that a typical homeowner would need another mortgage to take down a tree.
The owner does have the option of replacing.
A protected tree, let, let's, yeah, let, let's frame the issue, because it's not all trees.
Well, where's the list of protected trees then?
I believe we adopted Miami-Dade County's list of, of, and I'll, I'll defer to Kent Wally. I believe Miami-Dade County has already adopted, um, for, the standards for the county of what are endangered trees and which, and, and which are protected, and others which are invasive, which are not protected. And so the only ones that we're concerned with are the ones that are protected under Miami-Dade County ordinance, and by virtue of that ordinance are tree protection ordinance, which was chapter twenty. And as I stated, this is not new language, this has been in effect for quite some time. The only change you're seeing is that it's leaving chapter twenty, where it was its own chapter, and we're now incorporating it into the LDRs.
I, I don't think residents should be charged permits, um, charged to get permits or just to even have a permit. I think, um, if they meet whatever criteria that, um, deems that tree as, uh, a tree that can be cut down or, or suitable for removal, then they just meet that. But to require them to get a permit and, and just go through that process is, is just, is too much of a headache, and um, I think it further pushes away potential home buyers, um, from our city, because it's, it's, we're just creating so many rules and just, I, I don't know, it's becoming cumbersome to just maintain your home, the general maintenance of your home is just becoming so much of a headache.
If I can, if I could help you out on this, you know, we're not Miramore, we're not Pembroke Pines, where they built these developments and they put in X amount of certain trees.
Yeah.
We're an old community, that these trees have been around for a long time, people have moved into this area. They don't know what, what these trees are that are in their backyard, and, and we have a lot of tree coverage in, in North Miami. It's not like your, your, your flat divisions out in, in West Broward.
And I believe that's the.
So you can't, you cannot design rules by us, by trying to use what. So you can't, you cannot design rules by us by trying to use what was codified for those newer existing developments and try to apply it to an older older city where there's a a larger amount of trees. And residents that aren't from it.
This is existing, and also just by virtue of applying for a tree removal permit, that allows our staff to go and look at the tree and see is it is it protected? Is it one um that that we don't perhaps want you to cut down, or if you do cut down, that you are required to kind of replace that canopy for ecological reasoning?
But why does it have to be at the expense of the resident? I mean, why does why does there have to be an expense period? Um, I I see the logic behind it, but just even putting a price tag behind you, getting someone to find out if your tree is indigenous or not, it is is just, it's too much of a headache if you ask.
So the question is, it you know, just, you know, and a resident can just cut down a tree and then just go about it this way. I mean, I mean,
No, what I'm saying is this.
How do we control that? But the purpose of this is really to, because we do have a tree canopy. We do want to have the protection and provide, you know, shades, you know, eh, energy, energy savings, you know, with the the tree canopy. And then we do have some specimen trees, you know, trees that have been there that we want to protect. So, I mean, this is not just this or city ordinance, this is also a county ordinance.
But is most of the tree canopy, is it most of the tree canopy on swales and public right of way?
Not necessarily. I mean, that's also, even when you look at the county code, there's a specific number of trees that you have to require number of trees per eh eh lot.
But you keep saying canopy, and I get it, but the trees in my backyard aren't providing a canopy for anybody.
No, but but citywide, eh we all benefit from the effect of having that tree canopy for the city as a whole. It's not just for your property. It just happened that, you know, when 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 your property was, you are like, you know, twenty two trees, which is more than what the code requires. So now, for you to remove that, you know, there there was a benefit to the city, and then, and so that's why we have to go to that process. Some of the trees, you know, really are, yeah, specimen trees. And then they are protected by Miami-Dade County ordinances also. So you cannot just, you know, remove. If you do remove them, then you have to mitigate for it.
Yeah, if you if you choose to destroy the environment by taking down a protected tree or to reduce the canopy, there is some mitigation required.
I don't, I think you misunderstood what I was saying. I'm not talking about um just removing it. Um, I privileged it with the conversation about um permits. I can understand us having to go um to City Hall or maybe go to Public Works or Parks and Rec to find out if that tree could be removed, trimmed or treated or what have you, but why do I have to obtain a permit to get someone to come out to tell me whether I can cut this tree down or not? I mean, that's a simple conversation that could be had by me maybe scheduling an appointment.
Well, how would the city know which which trees were, wait, but how would the city, if there was no permit?
Yes.
How would the city know which trees were cut down lawfully versus unlawfully if we weren't to have a record of who was issued a permit and who was not? And I do, and as far as, I believe our permit fees are are quite minimal.
But you don't need a per, you you don't need a permit to record, I mean, do we need a permit to record what's going on here tonight? We don't need a permit to record that.
But you do need a permit for offense, right?
Come again?
You do need a permit for offense.
That's that's the city's decision. I mean, I probably wouldn't.
Well, I I think, let me answer it this way. If you, if if you asked Ken to come out to your house, he's not gonna require you to pull a permit first.
No.
You're gonna make an appointment.
But that's what was said.
Wait six months, he'll get there and he'll tell you that it's a protected tree or it's not a protected tree.
Well, when I made my statement, that's what was said. We had to get a permit pulled before you guys can come out and look at the tree and assess the situation. That's why I said, um, that's why I made the comment about the permit.
If you want to remove a tree, you have to pull a permit. If you want an assessment, you can give us a call.
I don't know if the tree could be removed or not. I think that's where the assessment comes in. From the assessment, then you determine whether the tree can be removed or not.
Correct, that's what we.
So that's where my comment came in as far as the permit goes.
The permit can come after the assessment if you would like an assessment.
Just to to chime in on this real quick, is, could the city not create a policy where the resident can take a five pictures all around of it, submit it to the the arbanist, and and submit a leaf and say, listen, is this tree protected? Need further review? Can I go ahead and trim it? Yes, guess what, it's just an old ficus tree that, go ahead and cut it down. And just do it visually as opposed to, and at no cost to the city, as opposed to having to, you know, the the staff having to go out there. If the pictures, we should allow the pictures or a video uh emailed to you and say, listen, this is the, you know, get all four sides of it. Eh eh is, what do you think? Is it looks okay? And they do it visually, and then if they have concerns, then they can come, make an appointment, come out, actually uh see it. Because most people don't understand it, they don't know it. Um, I recently was in front of the special masters, a friend of mine had a professional tree company cut the tree, and they got cited for hacking. Um, the special master, you know, uh saw it and she uh uh she compromised and said, you know, that you had, that that the homeowner did everything right. Professional company hauled it away, but still got cited. It was different opinion, the tree's doing great. So, you have those dilemmas, but you should make it much easier for the resident um and not get penalized because you wanna trim your tree and have to pay twenty-five dollars because you wanna trim your tree and do the right thing and not have it blow over and all the other stuff.
Exactly. It doesn't matter if the permit was two dollars or two hundred dollars, it's still.
So in other words, I mean, couldn't we simplify this somehow?
Thank you.
If it's on public property, I can't cut it. If it's on private property and I wanna remove it, I may need a permit, I may I may be prohibited if it's exotic or protected. And if it's not, go away, if I'm just trimming trees, I don't need to do anything.
Yeah, if you're just trimming it, you just need to follow the N C A two hundred specs, three hundred specs.
So trimming's allowed, period.
You can trim, yes.
I mean, can can we somehow fix the language so it's not nine pages of what I gotta do with my trees?
Exactly. It it lends itself to so much.
I'm still looking for the language that says that trimming a tree requires a permit.
It doesn't, not on private.
I see where, I I see language in. No, cutting to the point where it damages. I don't see.
Yeah, F, under F, page two twenty-five.
Cutting down.
Two twenty-five.
It's an F.
Cutting down, not trimming.
On public property.
Public property though. That's public property.
So that's where he he originally, when he asks a question and um he said, he asked whether it was public or private. And then we kind of went off on a tangent and started talking about private property, so.
That's what we pointed out earlier, this is all applied to public property, um as far as trimming. So that's when Mr. Pichon started talking about uh swale trees and things like that, so.
So as it pertains to private property, we would be excluded from this, and we could trim our trees as long as it's not exotic, and if it is exotic, then we will come and get it assessed by you, correct?
It's only if it's if it's protected.
Or indigenous.
No, but you say you can trim.
Say again, I'm sorry, now he's contradicting us.
No, no, I'm not, no. If we're talking about trimming and cutting, there's a difference, because you can trim your tree without a permit.
Right.
Whether it's on pub, public, it's a public, eh on public property and private property, that that doesn't require a permit.
We were told we could not. We were told that we could not touch the trees.
You can't if it's on, if it's in public property, you can't touch that.
You can touch that. Parks and Recs would do that for you. Because it's a liability.
But you can trim your private trees all day long. As long as you follow the.
N C A three hundred specs.
The specs that they have on their website would prevent tree abuse.
Just not in an adverse way. It's really just keeping the natural shape of the crown of the tree.
How large is the protected list? Hmm? How large is the protected list?
Protected list is basically protected trees that are not exempted. Most of your Florida friendlies and natives are in there.
Well, I was told that the trees on one hundred and twenty-fifth street um that are on public property are protected.
Public property.
On public property and, by the way, one hundred and twenty-fifth street is also county, correct? That that's county thoroughfare, that's state, and you don't have jurisdiction over that, correct?
But.
Right, see, so they they can't, they can't do anything about those trees because I, right, no, they shouldn't have though. Because I have the same problem on Miami Avenue. Uh, my two trees are under the county. My sidewalk is under the county. When my sidewalk cracked, I called the city and says, nope, you're on a, you're on a county thoroughfare, that's their responsibility. So that's where you have to understand, you can't, you can't.
Like I said, they bounce us from three different organizations. So from North Miami, send us to the county, from the county, they send us to, I guess, like I said, the liaison organization that protects the trees. So, I don't wanna keep going back and forth. I'll see you tomorrow or the day after, and maybe you can address.
Parks and Rec.
Or Park and, Park and Rec.
Okay, uh let's let's hear from the uh from our attorney here.
So I I have some language that may help clarify what's permitted and what's not.
God bless you.
Where are you, Gary?
Thank you.
So, page two forty, paragraph, section five dash two three oh seven, pruning or trimming standards.
Hang on a second, let us get there, Gary.
Gary, where are you, please?
Page two forty, section five dash twenty-three oh seven. So it starts, tree pruning or trimming shall, and it says, follow acceptable pruning trimming practices. So insert after the word shall, be permitted without a permit, provided that the owner follow acceptable pruning trimming practices.
Be per, say that again, Gary?
Thank you, counselor.
Be permitted without a permit?
Right, provided that the owner follow acceptable pruning trimming practices.
All right, that covers all the bases. Yep. Okay?
You okay with that?
So I'll make that and do a motion.
All right, Mike McDeer made moves to accept this language.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie Ernst. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Charlie, what's next on your list?
Just on a a qualification on section uh um uh forty-eight of this uh um article. We we talked about, uh, I think it was page forty-eight.
What page, sir?
Uh, the leads regarding the leads qualification. We said, uh, the, what page?
What page, sir?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, we're going backwards.
Yeah, well, make sure it's correct page number. I'm getting tired of.
This is all about lead standards, you said?
Yeah, lead standards. What what other, except, we we say other standards. I thought there was only just a lead standard.
No, there there are now multiple standards.
There are others, so we can follow those multiple standards?
Yeah.
All right, good, that question's answered, done. Um.
You know, Ken, while we're doing this as an aside, why don't you bring us a list next month of the protected trees?
It's in the, it's in here. It's in the book.
It is? I didn't, I haven't, I didn't see that, so what page is the list of protected trees on, if anybody knows?
The other one is uh, it tells you the ones that you don't, that you can cut.
Well, where is that?
Yeah, because I looked for it, I didn't see it.
It just would be nice to know so we don't have to revisit this discussion in seven years. And I I'm not seeing where there's a list of trees in this thing.
Mm, I didn't see it. I I went through this whole.
Well, so so Ken, why don't you just, eh do it by email. Have Marlene send us the list of protected trees. Then, you know, we don't, we know at least what a protected tree is, and anything else is not protected.
I mean, wha- what we'll do, we'll send you the list and then we'll also post it on the website.
Yeah, that sounds fine too, you know. But send us a list of the protected trees, so we know if it's one of those, we can't touch it. But if it's not on the list, it's fair game.
They're gonna ban you and.
And if you put that on the website, you might wanna put a picture of the tree next to it, for the people that don't know what what that is. Not to, not to go into the twenty-first century here, but.
You know, ma- 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 you know, years ago, the Miami Herald put out a list and and the pictures of the trees which you should plant and so forth and so on. What we could do very easily in the city is every residence get a mailing, these are permitted to be removed, uh the Australian pines, whatever the heck you wanna call them, the Florida holly. You know, put a depiction, buh 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 buh, you don't need a permit for these, you can cut them down. These you're gonna need a permit for. These are what you should put in. You know, and then we're done, you know, a gr- buttonwood, you can put these in, you know, and then you're done with it. Everybody has it and that's it.
It's nice to know what's protected. We're talking about protected. I didn't see a list of what's protected.
Yeah, I I got like here Brazilian pepper and all this other stuff is on, it's on page two forty-seven, which is not, that's the one that's cut down.
Wait, wait, let's get back to the leads.
Yeah, let's let's get down, yeah, 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 let's.
All right, let's go back to leads.
What's what's after lead? Are you done with lead?
Yeah, we got the, that that there are multiple things that are acceptable, and my question was, what uh what qualifies as as equivalent, and obviously there's other programs, and we don't necessarily have to follow leads.
Right.
Uh, may I move on?
Yes, you may.
Um, with regards to, we got that whole new section with the design board, um then we addressed that in article five, page forty-six. Uh, there's language that's written in. Should that somehow be uh in section H on page forty-six? Should that language not somehow be um added to the whole design board supplement that you you gave us regarding what their duties are and everything?
Right, forty-six.
It 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 may be repetitious for what you added for the quality, for the.
I didn't get into any standards, so I would not, I would not mess with this.
What we did was design excellence and judging design excellence of a particular design, say, city, it goes through different regulations as to what or or just.
Maybe we'll clean it up at some point.
Yeah, so so somewhere do we reference this to the design board or or?
Well, this would be, when the design board works, they'll look at your design standards, which includes this. This is design, what's, how, how, it refers often in your code to design excellence. This actually says what.
Differ this, have a language to defer that to the fact that there is a design board anywhere in this statement that we list.
No, but 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 I think that can be eh among other criterias that can use to eh in reviewing any particular pro- developing proposal.
But it's not just for the design board, it's actually for designers.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Which is why it's in the design section.
No, 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 yeah, we understand that.
We we can add a section that cross references to this.
Exactly.
Cross reference or something so that.
No, but 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 then we don't want to limit them to just that section.
Right.
No, we don't want to limit them to just that section, because give them, you know, broader authority when they reviewing that.
Okay.
Because there's a whole section that they need to look at. This is just what defines design excellence.
Excellent, yeah.
Because they get special, you know, disp- yeah, special incentives for designing excellence.
Quick point of reference on page two forty-seven.
Uh, section D is where the list of prohibited plants and species are listed. Right.
Um, from Miami-Dade County. So you were correct. There is a list there. It's on two forty-seven D, letter D.
Right, it it doesn't include, it doesn't include um what you, what he wants to send to you though.
That's in addition.
D is the ones that you can cut.
Okay.
Yeah. What he wants to send to you are those protected ones. These are the ones they wanna get rid of.
Okay. Oh, the prohibited ones, I'm sorry, I misread that.
Can I get back to the design thing again, please?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that these can be uh uh entered as uh design standards or developed as design standards?
Dual article, dual division.
That that, that's what the whole division is.
I I just added, yeah, I just added the whole thing. See also standards in sex, in article five, division eight of these L D Rs.
Right, because if you go.
So all of it is now cross referenced.
If you, right, eh but if you go to page forty, B, the bottom, says design standards.
Yeah, okay.
So everything that you see here are all your design standards.
And 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 again, our design board would follow these design standards.
And Gary just made a note to cross reference to the design standards.
Should somebody challenge you, bring it up, the design board has this to go back to and say that it's it's.
Got it. Gary, you you're gonna make that note? Okay.
Um, I I have some issues with with signs, and I think it would take up a whole lot of time, and I I just, I'm throwing in the towel.
With what, sir? With what sections?
They, signs, with some of the vague languages, because we've gone through signs, sizes and everything else. Just quick. Just quickly, have we changed, changed anything with regards to what we are allowing sign wise size? Because we had pretty strict sizes on signs and what was allowed.
Let me go. What page is that, sir?
Uh, freestanding signs, one sixty three?
One sixty.
One fifty six. Let me get over there, sir.
Section five.
One sixty three.
One six three, okay. I'm not aware that we changed a whole great deal about this.
Right.
Um, one of the things is that I think we actually expanded it in some fashion, for example, um, the maximum that you could have before was a hundred and fifty square feet, um, or one square foot for each lineal feet, but it didn't address, um, uh, properties that had facades that were bigger than that.
Right.
That was identified, so we've made that, we fixed that, so we actually gave.
So we're only allowed for bigger signs.
Allowed for bigger signs, right.
See, that, that's, that's where I, I think, the, the, the problem was that a lot of people didn't wanna see massive signs start popping up like we have on the sides of buildings in the city of Miami, which has now become an issue, that people are like, pretty sick and tired of looking at these, uh, twenty feet by fifty feet large signs hanging off sides of buildings.
Right, well, this, this is, the way that you did this is you, you had these little dinky, you had bigger buildings that had lo- larger, larger frontages. But you had a maximum, you had, you had larger properties, but you had a, you were applying the same maximum to smaller properties.
Standard, standard, right.
So we, we.
But, but there's, yeah, go ahead.
So now we're recognizing that you have larger frontages that should be allowed to have, to be addressed, um, because they're larger, and they have larger frontages.
A- and then, uh, to add to this, you know, 'cause you got, you know, some of those, you know, larger retail stores, not only they have, you know, the big identification sign, they may also have some of the products that they sell, they have real signs, it's a cumulative, you know.
It's a cumulative total.
It to, yeah, that's what, you know, so we have to take that into account, 'cause they do have a larger frontage, 'cause if, if you limit them to this, or then that's when you, they have to come back and apply for variances and, yeah.
Right.
Because what, what, years ago, what the city did was, for instance, there were huge signs, uh, out in front of the buildings that were on freestanding, um, display things that, that were limited, those were, those went away.
No, no, those are for the wall signs only.
Right, well, you, the, the, those type of things is not what's changed.
Yeah.
What has changed is the, is recog- not the, you can't have big, still can't have big gigantic signs.
Yeah.
What has changed is the recognition that some parcels.
Sure.
Um, would allow you more signage.
Right.
But they still have to meet the, 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 the square feet, yeah.
That one fifty.
But if Wal- so in other words, if Walgreens wants to put Walgreens on the side of their drugstore, it has, it, it can conform to the size of the building.
Yeah.
That's reasonable, I understand that.
You can scale to that, yeah.
Scale to the building, yeah, it can't be like the entire length of the building.
You scale to it, so the language, the language is set that it is to the scale of the building, that's what we, you know, I wanna be assured.
Well, up to a maximum size on the face, so it's a to- it's a cumulative, um, so for example, if you have a parcel that has a five hundred, um, s- uh,
Feet.
Feet of frontage, you have a total cumulative signage, um, that can't exceed, um, two hundred and fifty square feet.
And five hundred.
And five hundred feet frontage or more, for a maximum of five hundred square feet of signage.
Okay.
So, but each sign, um, you still have to look at, that this is covering, these type of developments aren't going to have a big Walgreens building and then five hundred square feet of sign.
Right.
On it.
Right.
That's not what you would allow. Yeah, it would, it all, it's gonna be different side signage for different buildings, but it does recognize the larger parcels, because then you're gonna have more buildings, especially like your, um, as you've gone up in height for some of these other buildings, and you've got a linear feet of, they combine parcels, and now you've got a five hundred foot frontage, uh, you still were allowing them only two hundred and fifty square feet of.
One fifty.
Uh, case in point, the building, uh, the old bank building on one hundred and twenty fifth street and Biscayne Boulevard, they have a for lease sign hanging all the way down the side of the building. Would that, is, is that basically nonconforming, or, or?
I'm, I mean, that, that would be what we call a banner sign or real estate signage, it's a temporary sign.
Temporary sign.
But that's, that temporary sign's been there for years, so I mean, you know, where.
I'm, 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 no, but, but then again, you know, for real estate, I think we should have a limit on there, have them come back, and then so that's why to that process, we are trying to establish, you know, a sign plan application. And so at least you can have control over those things, 'cause it become, yeah, it does become a compliance issue, and then, you know, and then we do have those limits, you know, and then if, okay, for some reason, the, the, you, you have at least the building, then you can come back and ex- and extend that approval. But, but I do agree with you, but it should be fifty square feet, that's what the code allows, it shouldn't be no greater than fifty square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right, and it says, um, like, for example, that real estate sign, you can have it up for six months, and then if you need an extension for another six months.
Yeah.
You know, you come back in and, you know, get approval to extend it another six months.
Right, yeah.
So it sounds like there's a compliance issue there as far as the, the size of that banner and how long it's been up.
I agree.
Six, seven years.
And, and I, and I, you know.
Six or seven years.
Right, all right.
So let me, and you asked me some other changes that were here, um, when we look at, we address nonconforming signs. Um, you had just a little bit of language on nonconforming signs.
Mm-hmm.
And what we did is we recognized that you have nonconforming signs here. Um, we've, um, looked at nonconforming freestanding signs in the shopping centers, and it's, you know, really you wanted to improve some of the aesthetics of some of those older signages in these shopping centers, and so they can keep them, um, or they can modify them. And, um, but one of the things that we are requesting now is that the, these shopping centers or mixed use developments have what's called a, a, um, a master sign program, essentially. So that it says those signages become consistent, so if you've got a total of that parcel of five hundred square feet of signs, the name of the development might be the shopping center, uh, you know, might be Kevin's Shopping Center, well, that's not gonna count toward the total maximum signage, but all those individual signs will, so we've recognized that, that's another, um, good change that was made, so, so it doesn't count toward your limitation for signs.
So, uh, I'm trying to think of a, an example, of one hundred and twenty third street and Biscayne Boulevard, the arcade, shopping center where the Walgreens are and Ross, they have that one big sign out front. Is that sign limited to the size that it currently is, or if somebody was develop, to develop a, a similar, uh, structure like that, would they be allowed to make a sign bigger than what that sign is?
I couldn't answer that, I couldn't answer that, I think that would be something you'd have to look.
Yeah, see, that's where, that's where, you know, if we're gonna allow bigger and better signs, then, you know, where's the standard with standard sign? I think what we had done in the past is we had a standard size that you could not max out on, you, you can only.
We still do. You, you still do.
No, but, but, uh, uh, we do have that in the code, but to the comprehensive, uh, sign program.
Right.
City staff were, was allowed to change that, 'cause sometimes, you know, it depends on the size of development, and then we've seen a lot, you know, and that has been approved, you see, it's greater than forty square feet, 'cause what the code requires for d- detached signs, it's forty square feet, but you have, you know, multiple signs throughout the city, with, eh, detached sign that are greater than forty square feet.
And they're not, they're, they're not complying with the law, they should.
No, no, they, they do, 'cause they, they were issuing approval by ci- by the city, to the comprehensive sign program. I think the comprehensive sign program is just another way of, you know, varying those standards, you know, to accommodate certain development proposal, appo- yeah.
So, you know, I mean, we addressed this years ago, and, and there was, the outcry was that there were too many oversized signs, and it was starting to blight, you know, it was, we were, we were becoming like a Las Vegas Strip or whatever.
I'm, I'm. And, and I agree with you.
And that was what we wanted to try to control by limiting the size of the signs.
And, and I agree with you, and then I think, you know, language can be put in the code to say that, you know, I mean, uh, this cannot be approved, you know, it should be to, maybe to, they can go to a variance process, just to do the board of adjustment, just like any other, eh, eh, deviation for the dimensional requirements.
But I, but I thought, I thought we already had that in, in the language, and did we not address this, Mr. Chairman, years ago?
We did years ago, but, you know, design standards have changed, you now have LED signs that we didn't have years ago, and, uh, I, so many issues have come up with commercial signage and advertising, uh.
You, uh, I mean, if you read, you know, eh, eh, the language from section five dash fifty, one five oh six, it says that the intent of the comprehensive sign program is to provide pri- private property owners and businesses with flexibility to develop innovative, creative and effective signage, and to improve the minimum science, I mean, sh- should we not have an, and the city gonna have that, they are innovative in the, to mean, which are desire, eh, so if you read that sentence, it say that, you know, that allows staff, you know, the city to vary those criteria kind of to that comprehensive sign program. And that has been done in the past, and that's why you see certain nu- newer signs, you know, detached signs, that are greater than the forty square feet minimum requirements specified here. So, I mean, uh, I mean, yes, so if you want to provide language, you know, to address that, you know, that's a, yeah.
And that's existing, that you already have, you have, we've established, you all have done a nice job of establishing some flexibility criteria for looking at the architectural theme to make sure that it's thematic, um.
And, and then, no, to, to, I mean, I may add, you know, in some other municipalities, and then eh, to the point that Debbie made earlier, depending on the, on your, eh, lot, eh, street frontage, 'cause if you have a, a commercial, you know, property, non-residential, it's only hundreds, eh, eh, linear foot of frontage, then maybe you can allow forty, some peop- some cities, that's how they do it. If you have up to five hundred, you allow two hundred, over eh, one fifty, over that you are, you can cap it at two hundred, some, but at least if you over five hundred, then you can go all the way to the full two hundred square feet.
Right.
But then, I mean, there, there's way to, to address that, 'cause you don't want to have like a large development and then you got a little forty square foot of signage. And businesses are about signage, they want to have in that visibility on the street, forty square feet is not enough.
Which is why, which is why the, the flexibility criteria looks at the site itself, it looks at the development as proposed.
Exactly.
So you have great experts on your staff that has a lot, looked at the flexibility criteria that you've established here, and they're approving things that are within, keeping within, not being garish and, you know, uh, overbearing, but yet is still flexible enough to respond to the market and what somebody is proposing for development.
All right, do we have any further points, Charlie?
I defer to Mr. Burns with the comment.
Did, uh, you mentioned about signs, uh, Charles, about murals, if you go to page two twenty, two twenty, section G.
What are murals?
Yeah, me, uh, permitting and review required.
Public, private.
Yeah.
It says that it's a permit reviewed by the art selection committee, permit issued by the City of North Miami Museum of Contemporary Art. At the council meeting the other night, they were saying that the MOKA is going to be its own private, private nonprofit entity. Separated from the city, we're going to have some employees, but you are in theory now allowing a private nonprofit to be deciding whether or not the city issues a permit or not, I think that's a, a conflict, uh, maybe the attorneys would know better. How can you leave a nonprofit to dictate to me what the city can issue to me?
Yes, but at what point does that take it back?
And the problem is, that committee doesn't exist, and the problem is, there's nobody at MOKA existing today that could pass judgment really on a mural, because they're not functioning the way they, they should be, I don't think.
So for clarification, the art selection committee is not MOKA, we, that's not what the LDRs designate.
All right, Jennifer?
The, um, art selection committee is referenced in the following section, section five dash two one oh two, where the city retains control. The city manager, or the city manager's designee is who establishes the art selection committee, um.
Well, what's that part that says permit issued by the City of North Miami Museum of Contemporary Art?
That I'll have to defer to, to either staff or Debbie Love on that particular sentence, but I know that our art selection committee is very, um, specific, our committee has a, a, a specific amount of members, and, um, while they're knowledgeable in the field of art, they're not necessarily tied to MOKA in any way, shape or form.
I mean, eh, one of the reasons why we include that language, it's because, you know, we, you know, with MOKA, they would have the experts, 'cause, you know, staff, you know, we're not trained into art, and then when, 'cause ba- basically it can become really unsubjective, as we, somebody can come with a mural, so that's why we had put that language, 'cause, I mean, with the assumption that MOKA will be, eh, functional and then working, or as it's su- supposed to be working, so that's why we had put that language, 'cause they would have, you know, the experts in, eh, in their staff that could, you know, review such, you know, proposals. But, um, if, at, at such point, you know, when, uh, that decision is made by the city council to have that as a private, you know, uh, eh, nonprofit entity, I think, you know, we can go back and remove that.
Well, they're supposedly already operating as a nonprofit, and that was an issue that came up, uh, the other night. And again, the art committee makes sense, you have the art committee and a design review people, that's great, but tying it in that, you know, MOKA has a, eh, eh, it implies that MOKA is giving the okay for the permit, and I don't think MOKA should be, uh, issuing permits, um, per se, or have the final say on it. I think the art committee, and I think you're confusing, the art committee could be made up of somebody from MOKA, um.
I, I think it should be reviewed by, instead of permit issued by MOKA, may- maybe that, that language.
It actually says that the permit reviewed and recommendation is, is made by the art selection committee, so I, I don't know if, um, I, I'm not, I have no knowledge of pr- of, of a MOKA even having.
It's under G, under G one, it says permit reviewed, recommendations made by the art selection committee, permit issued by the City of North Miami Museum of Contemporary Art.
Why don't we just leave out MOKA and just say the, uh.
City of North Miami.
City of North Miami and Miami, the art committee.
And the art selection committee.
And then.
City accepts the change.
Yeah, and, and we just, we delete the, the museum, they can, they may have a seat on the board or the committee, but they don't actually issue the permit.
Yeah. Exactly. No, the city should.
So we need, we, we need to actually kind of restructure that sentence, I think, a little bit, is that it's, the permit is reviewed, um.
Yeah, exactly.
By the art committee.
By the art committee, and a recommendation made for permitting by the city.
Yeah, something like that.
Something along those lines, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my motion, I believe, I, we have a second.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we strike MOKA from that process and leave it to the, uh, the, our legal counsel to rework the language.
And then under number two, the standards, it says murals, uh, shall only be permitted in C two, uh, C three zoning districts, and commercial corridors and the arts overlay district, and areas of the CB two W zoning districts along one hundred and twenty third. So are you saying if a cafe or restaurant wants to put on a, a mural on the side of their restaurant on Seventh Avenue, they're not allowed to? That if they wanna do it in, um, non-overlay district, the reason this came up is 'cause there's a mural on the side of, uh, Vega Burgers, um, on sixteen, seventeenth Avenue and one hundred and twenty fifth.
Vega's, yeah, the, uh.
Yeah, beautiful, people like it, but they were gonna get cited, but they've corrected it and, uh, 'cause hopefully the, the mural permit will go through, but again, if the murals and the artwork are beautiful.
Is that the C two BW?
I don't, I don't know what it is, why would it not be allowed on Seventh Avenue corridor, if somebody wanted to paint a, a Chinese symbol on the side of their building, or if it's on Dixie Highway, they want to put a beautiful artwork on there, why would it not be, uh, uh, allowed?
I, I mean, eh, we also have to look at, you know, the boundaries of the art overlay district, I think it's really wide encompassing. And, uh, I mean, for Seventh Avenue, probably would defer that, no sense, there is a master plan being, you know, or, or designed for the Seventh Avenue to the, you know, Chinatown, and I think, you know, they can address that, you know, for that corridor specifically, but eh, but for Dixie and, uh, for, oh, yeah, for Dixie, which is a commercial corridor, and I think, you know, within the art overlay, then I think it, it, it would be permitted.
But, but I think we shouldn't limit, if it's gonna be on commercial corridors and commercial businesses, eh, I don't think we should say, okay, because you're in this particular neighborhood, you get to do a beautiful artwork, if you look on, um, bless you, on, uh, Kung Fu Connection that's on, um, Dixie Highway outside of the city, they did a beautiful mural on the side of this old eyesore of a building, beautiful artwork, and as we know, what has happened in, in Wynwood with the walls of Wynwood, that they don't dictate where and what or when, and it's that whole creativity, and at Seventh Avenue, there's a lot of blank side walls that are horrible, you know, in between, uh, buildings, that I would think that we would encourage, uh, beautiful artwork, and, uh, it shouldn't just be the art overlay district or just a, a CB two, I just think that it should be.
Chair concurs that we're a bit too restrictive in that.
Eh, 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 exactly, that, you know, let's be. Exactly, that, you know, let's be creative throughout the whole city.
So, so let's find a way to open that up for all commercial districts, and then see what happens.
So, do you want this to read, murals shall be permitted in all commercial zoning districts, commercially zoned districts.
In all commercials.
Yeah. And make it simple, and let's see what happens over seven years.
Okay, I wanna move the motion.
Alright, Mike moves that as a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Kenny, all in favor? Okay, we're done with that. Charlie is done, alright, Mike, you're next.
Okay, I wanna jump to, um, definitions in, uh, section seven.
Page?
Thirty eight.
Did you?
Page thirty eight.
You're gonna, you're gonna leave five, sir, that's okay with you?
We're done with five. Uh, make a motion that we accept, uh, that we accept, um. Well, no, we're, we're, we gotta, I, I gotta get to mine.
Yeah, you're getting to yours, yes.
Say, yeah, whatever you've got with section five. Yeah, can we just go ahead and have him address five?
Do you have anything for section five?
Okay.
No, 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 I'm not.
Alright, so what's five?